George, could you take over?
Colonel Evans?
Here.
Mr. Grozan?
Here.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Here.
Mr. Miko?
Here.
Mr. Neso?
Here. Stand for the pledge. Mr. Evans, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic, for which it stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Colonel. District goals. This is the part of the meeting, every meeting, that we talk about our district goals because everything in the package relates back to the goals. I think it's important, and we talk about this every, every single meeting, and some people might say, "Why do we do this every meeting?" Because it is what drives us, it's what we do, and this is what we, this is why we are here. So we've got three goals, we've got a graphic up there, academic achievement, financial prudence, and community engagement. You can see that those, those rings intersect because all three of them come together, and it's very important to us. So with that, we'll move on to recognition, and we've got a very important one tonight.
That's right, Mr. Neso. I'd like to ask Senator Thomas Patton from District 24 to come to the podium as he has a recognition for the board and the school district. Senator, thanks again for being here, and appreciate your time.
No, thank you very much for allowing me this opportunity, and I have the, November 1st this year will mark my 40th anniversary becoming a resident of Strongsville. I think there was 12,000 people when I moved into Strongsville 40 years ago as a much, much younger guy. I had two kids at the time, and I moved down a street called Rabbit Run, and I ended up with six kids. I think part of it is because they moved to Rabbit Run, but it's, it's been a great town and a great city to, to raise a family, and now raising five of my seven grandchildren live here in Strongsville. So I have the great privilege and honor to represent 28 cities in the Ohio Senate, 24 school districts, to be, to be fair. Obviously, my favorite town is Strongsville. You know, I always say it takes me two hours to drive to the State House from my driveway to the State House garage, but it only takes me an hour and 45 minutes to get home because you're just that anxious to get back home. And I had the privilege, not many weeks back, to have Superintendent Cameron Reiba and the principal of the new, our new junior high, Steve Dietrich, took time out of their busy day to give me a tour of this magnificent, and you know, you try to think of words, and you wish there was something more than magnificent to kind of sum up the impression I got from the school. You know, I've visited several schools in, you know, both parochial and public schools, but I have never seen anything that could compare to our new junior high school. It's a tribute to our administration, it's a tribute to the faculty that inspires, you know, their students, and most importantly, it's, this should almost be a proclamation to the folks in Strongsville who have supported this district to the point where we could do that kind of a building, that kind of an edifice, because that's going to affect, we talked before this meeting about, this is going to affect generations of kids to come in the future. The learning tools and stuff, Strongsville parents should know this, they take a backseat to nobody in the state of Ohio when it comes to what we provide for those students. We have a world-class faculty, you guys do a marvelous job, and so I could read this rather well-written proclamation, but I don't think you guys really want me to, so I'll ask Cameron if he would come up for us just a second. And then short, what I'll, what I'd simply like to say is that while you guys are doing magnificent, magnificent, magnificent and wonderful things, the state of Ohio is watching you, you know, so it's not that it has not gone without recognition. We wish we could come up with even more money for the schools, you know. When the governor vetoed the TPP fix for 2017, we found 40, 48 million that he couldn't veto, and fortunately, I was able to get 29% of that money from my district, and I know Strongsville was a beneficiary of some of that money. We still need to try to do more. Medicaid is the monster, the budget. At the last number I took, took a look at, 39 cents in every dollar in the state, for the state dollar goes to Medicaid. 31 cents goes K through 12. 12 cents only goes to higher ed, and we're at eight and a half, almost nine cents for prisons and corrections. So those four major line items, folks, that's 90 cents in a dollar spot. I always joke that I get to go spend the other dime down in the State House, and, but as I say, now we're not here to talk about budgets and stuff, we're here simply to recognize all of you in the room and all those folks that have participated in the project or contractors, anybody that did a whale of a job. We're very, very proud of Strongsville, I'm proud to call it my hometown, and I'm delighted that we have, I believe, the best junior high school building that I've ever seen. So congratulations to all of you. Here you go, sir. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Once again, thank you Senator Patton for your time and being here, and I echo your thoughts, especially the thought of thank you to our community. You know, we are blessed to have, as you said, one of the best middle schools out there, a renovated high school, updated athletic fields, preschool, transportation complex, and it wouldn't have been possible at all without the support of our community to make this a reality. So thank you for being here, thank you to the Strongsville community for making this a reality for our kids, as, as Mr. Grozan and I know the rest of the board echo, for many years to come. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
With that, Mr. Neso, that takes us to the superintendent's report, and at this time, I would like to ask our communications coordinator, Dan Faust, to come to the podium. One of the things we've been doing each board meeting is highlighting one of those three goals, and tonight we're going to highlight community engagement, and one of those action steps on our Strong Schools 2020 Plan is to establish and/or strengthen community partnerships that are mutually beneficial at the district and building level by increasing the number of those partnerships that are focused on student opportunities and engagement, and Mr. Faust is going to share actually how we're bringing this action step to life and the work he's doing, so I'll turn it over to Dan.
Good evening, everyone, and as Mr. Reiba mentioned, as one of our, in support of one of our three district goals, community engagement, we have developed a plan to help integrate our community more so into our school district and helping and being involved in our, in our classroom and the, in the learning environment for our students. We all know that Strongsville is a very supportive, giving community on many different levels, parents, local businesses, civic organizations, we see it on a daily basis, and this, this plan helps to foster that and continue to grow those relationships. We want to create and find additional ways to reach out to Strongsville and invite them to be more engaged, even more engaged with our student population, with our teachers, our staff and administration. So we've talked about in our, in the process of building a database that reflects business involvement and can serve as a resource for our schools if they are looking for, let's say, a guest speaker, a community partner, or other opportunities to volunteer such as career days, internship and externship opportunities. I know Mr. Smithberger and the English 12 faculty are currently developing a plan for a senior project that will feed into this database very nicely and will reap the benefits of having a strong database. This high school has developed a form for businesses to actually fill out, return to us, and they can choose from several different options on what their involvement might look like. So there are some very minor involvement, and there are some more extensive involvement with our, with our school district, and we are developing that form to not only service the high school, but also the middle school, the elementary schools, and the preschool. So we want this to be a partnerships that we see at all different levels and can be mutually beneficial for not only the, the business community or those volunteers that want to be involved with the schools and our, our school district as a whole. So that gives you, I guess, a 35,000-foot look at it, and we're going to continue to build this database and have it available for staff and faculty to utilize it as a resource, and again, continue to strengthen those relationships of our community with our school district.
I'd just like to thank the Chamber of Commerce, I had the privilege to speak with them this past week, and Mark was with me and shared a little bit about, you know, his desire and our desire to partner with the business community, and already the Chamber's reached out, asked for an additional meeting for how we can help with getting our students some internship opportunities and businesses that want to come partner with us. So we're just getting it off the ground, but through Dan's leadership and work overseeing this on a district level, we feel we're going to have a good comprehensive resource as to how we can continue to effectively use that partnership, and so we're excited to see what we can accomplish this year.
Excellent. I know one of, one of the resources, the Career Day, I mean, we had, how many volunteers came in last year for high school for Career Day?
Yeah.
A lot, and I think we could use that, start with that list, because it was a great list, and everybody there was enthusiastic and wanted to do more, and I know a lot of the, a lot of the people on those forums signed up to do, said they could do internships and that kind of such for our students, so might be a good place to reach out. Nice.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Next, I've asked Jenny to share about an upcoming event that is being put on that we're excited to begin, so Jenny.
So one of the goals for SPOT this year, which is the Strongsville Positive Outreach Team grouping, groups of teachers, administrators, staff, we have transportation represented, food services, we all come together and plan events, and like I said, our goals this year are really to reach out to the community and, again, continue that strength and partnership. And so we have our inaugural Safe Trick or Treat will take place on October 26 at the middle school from 6 to 8. We welcome kids, parents of all ages to come, dress up for Halloween, and the only entrance fee is a non-perishable food item. We have many of our student groups that are coming together to be stations, and so students will be able to go around and collect treats from each station, I think we have about 30 stations represented, lots of student groups like Key Club, different things from both the middle school and the high school, we have staff representing tables, we also have some community groups. The Heartbeats Jump Rope Club will be there to represent, we have Jeff Ellis from International Karate Studios coming, Empowering Punch is going to be there, so there's just going to be a lot of fun, and it's a safe greet and treat, we call it, to showcase our, showcase our school along with our community and invite especially those elementary students and parents that maybe have not had a chance to get through the middle school yet. So we really want everybody to come and enjoy the evening.
That sounds great.
Great idea.
You know, and the night, everybody, obviously, everybody has a lot on their plate, not only in our district, but in life, and this is a large group of staff that volunteer their time and energies to bring that connection, not only internally, but also with our community, so I'm thrilled for it. I know, I know the Reiba children are excited for another opportunity to get some candy. Thank you, Jenny. Just a couple other updates, just a reminder, we did a voice shot yesterday, but tomorrow is our first early release day. All of our students will arrive home or be ready for pickup one hour earlier. We, we've had five early release days last year, we only have two excluding the last day of school, two this year, and this is one of those, and our teachers will be working together on, Aaron and Andy and Jenny have worked to plan a meaningful early release day, it's professional development, it's times for teachers to get together and to continue to look at data and how our students are doing, not just in their classroom or in their building, especially at the elementary level, but how are all of our first graders doing on an assessment piece, our next step guided reading in the elementary level. So we're excited to have that opportunity and appreciate our parents' flexibility and patience as we alter the schedule a little bit tomorrow. Also, next week on Thursday, October 27, Vicki and I will be at Tom &amp; Shee from 5:30 to 7:30 for our second community conversation. Again, this is an informal opportunity to have dialogue with our community about just general feedback or questions or comments about what we're doing as a district. Vicki will be there, the focus is technology, anybody that wants questions or have a discussion about where we're going with our technology, Vicki will be there, so there's only so much grilled cheese and tomato soup you can eat, so hopefully people will come out and talk to us and share the thoughts on what we're doing as a district.
What time is that?
5:30 to 7:30 PM on October 27, so. I've never eaten there, so I know we're excited to go. I've heard from multiple people, it's delicious, so we're, we're excited. And the last thing that I wanted to share with the board and the community, on the voice shot, I also shared a variety of fall athletic, you know, sectionals and district competitions that are going on, our girl soccer team just started a few minutes ago, but at our final football game, our Friday, October 28 football game, it's going to be a busy night. So before the game, we're going to have senior night activities, we're also going to have a dedication of our brand-new flag and flagpole, and I'm not going to spoil the surprise, but it really is going to be an outstanding dedication, so make sure everybody's there a few minutes early for that. Also, our train, collaboration with our transportation department, we're going to have a school bus there, we're going to have a fill-the-bus event, so we asked that anybody bring canned food, boxed food items, actually, it's on our Facebook page, it's on our Twitter feed about what the food bank needs at this time, so anybody that's willing to bring something to support our food bank and fill the bus would be greatly appreciated. And then at halftime, we're going to pull three raffle ticket winners for either $500 cash prize, free car washes for a year, or a brand-new Chevy Cruze, so we'll do that at halftime. We will sell tickets at the door, but officially, the raffle, the ticket sales end tomorrow, so if you didn't get your tickets yet, you still have an opportunity before you enter the game to purchase your ticket, and last year's winner purchased the ticket right before the game, so it's never too late to win a brand-new car. And with that, unless there's questions, that's my report to the community.
Nice job, Cameron. That brings us to public comment, which there is none, and approval of minutes. So we have the August 18th, September 1st, September 15th, and September 19th, special board meeting minutes to approve. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Duke. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, George. Any discussion, any of the minutes?
Good job, Don.
Excellent job.
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Brings us to our treasures report.
Thank you, Mr. Neso. I have a few items for your consideration tonight. The first one, item A, which could be found in Exhibit A, is the five-year forecast, presented this as a discussion item last board meeting, no changes to the forecast presented, as you're all aware, we have the, we have to present this and the board approves it every six months, twice a, twice a year, so this is our first one, it's due by October 31st, and we'll do another update in May. Any questions on the forecast before I move on? Moving on to item B, which could be found in Exhibit B, is the financial report for month ending August 31, 2016, and then moving on to item C is the financial report for month ending September 30, which can be found in Exhibit C, and I also have my usual briefing PowerPoint presentation to go along with this, I'm going to make my way up to the podium and promise I'll be quick on it.
Well, this is the good stuff, take your time.
This is coming from CPA.
Hey, you know, it's numbers, it's something I can actually understand.
All right, so my financial report for September 30, our district goals, and I just realized I'm missing one, so student achievement, growth, financial prudence, which this will cover, and our third one is community engagement, so I'll update this for next month. Just a slide that I always had from, in the beginning, just for anyone that hasn't seen this before, is our financial prudence throughout the years, I'm not going to go over it right now, we're all aware of it, but it's there for those that haven't seen it yet, which leads us into our general fund summary. So as of September 30 compared to previous years, compared to last year, our revenue is up about 700,000 compared to September of last year. Really, the two big differences are, first, property taxes, we're up about 500,000, and the main reason for that is attributable to, to refunds. The county automatically deducts refunds when they give out our taxes, and it's for people that, residential and commercial property that disputed their property values after the tax bills have already been sent out. What happens is if we come to a settlement or the board of revisions passes their new value, they get a refund, which is automatically deducted. Historically, we got about half a million dollars coming out, this past settlement period, only 35,000 came out, so part of that is the county's finally getting caught up on the revisions, they've been backlogged for a number of years. I'm thinking for the first half in, in 2017, calendar year collections, we might see another increase there, I've been getting a log of various commercial property fighting their values, so which is typical, we have an attorney that works and settles it on our behalf, and they come up with evaluate, they come up with valuations, and we try and reach a settlement, what we believe is fair. And then the other increase is in other revenues.
It's, um, one question on that, the, on the property tax, it's, are we certain that they're, they're getting caught up and they haven't fallen further behind, so they're not, so they're not impacting us?
No, I'm pretty sure they're getting caught up.
Okay.
It's been, uh, from when, I believe, Buttigieg took office, and everything, there's been a, and a big effort on their end to get all the revisions backlog, it was a whole series of back, backlog that took place, so.
All right, good.
And then other revenues is up, and that's just more of a timing issue, it's for tuition of court-pleaded students in our district that we received tuition from other districts. Last, last year, we received this payment in December or January, now it's, it came in September, we receive it twice a year, first half of the year and the second half, so it's just earlier paid, so it's more of a timing. And then all other revenues are essentially trending on pace, that's what we received from previous years. Expenditures, expenditures are about 1.5 million less through September compared to last year, I don't think this trend's going to continue based on the forecast, I'm projecting our expenses to be a little bit higher than last year, the reason through September is more of a timing issue. In 2015, we had 26 payrolls, then we converted to the, twice a month, but to transition last fiscal year, we transitioned down to 25, and this year, we're finally in 24, twice a month, so last year through September, there was an additional payroll that we don't have now, so that's why it looks like the expenses are less through September. So moving on to general fund revenues, in the forecast, I projected about 71.5 million dollars in revenue that we're going to receive through September, we received 27.2 million of that so far, since the forecast is still fresh, I'm anticipating that we're going to receive the revenues as forecasted with a slight increase, that we received commerce, the casino receipts after I did the forecast, and it's about 6,000 more than what I projected. Revenues by category, as you can see, the, the taxes are slightly up, but all others are pretty consistent from last year. Moving on to Slide 11, general fund expenditures, through September, we should have expended 25% of our budget, it's, right now, through encumbered and expended, we're about 28.37%, which is slightly higher, that's typical in the beginning of the school year, just because a lot of things are purchased, at the beginning of the school year to get ready for the school year. This trend will go down, the, I have the numbers from the last previous two years, we were about 31% in 2016 and 30% in 2015, so it's kind of right where it should be for this time of year. And then also based on the number of pays, so based on the pays and the months, it's both at 25% as the benchmark. Slide 12, as you can see, the slide on the left is the percent encumbered, expended by category, so salary and benefits, right where it should be, purchased services, the yellow bar is the average from the previous three years, right at our averages for each category. And then expenditures by category, same thing, we're kind of right at our, we're in the previous year, salaries is a little bit less, but that's because of that previous, the additional pay last year, and purchased service slightly less, but those are more of a timing issue of when goods, goods and services are needed and the timing of those.
George?
Yes.
Purchased services, is that part of permanent improvement fund money?
No, this is just general fund.
General fund, okay.
So permanent improvement is in, in Fund III.
Okay.
So that's, this is just our operating.
Okay.
It does include cer, our utilities and.
I was thinking that through the construction phase, in 2015, we were, just in the beginning of it, we were supporting a number of more buildings.
Right.
And we're also repairing a lot more of those buildings, I didn't know if that had anything to do with the fact that that number's stepping down.
No, that's recorded in another fund.
Okay.
What we'll see is if utilities.
Operating costs for those buildings would be in that number.
The utilities.
If we have fewer builders, buildings now, it would be reflected to some extent, not the repair, not the repair costs.
Okay.
But the operating costs, any utilities or any of that would certainly flow through that number.
It is less. Okay. It is less. I'm a little confused about the salary thing, because even though we have less pay periods, shouldn't it be their bigger pay periods, because the same, same salaries just divided less?
No, well, yeah, but it, by the time it averages out, so last year, there were five pays through, no, seven pays through September, now we had six pays, so each, it's a little bit less, it'll start averaging out.
There's certain, there's certain months where you end up with three pays.
Yeah.
In a month, because you have, there's two, there's, there'll be two months out of the year where you end up with three pays, and because we're a cash basis, that third pay looks like you've, you know, your, your pay is through the roof for that month.
Right.
But then it kind of spreads out over the year, this will be much more steady as it goes, we, I, I see it at my place, too, we have.
You know what I'm saying.
26 yet. Which I can't stand.
It'll surpass, it'll surpass, if, if we spend what we have budgeted for salary, that number will surpass it by the end of the year.
Okay.
By the end of the fiscal year. There were three pays last July, that's where the difference was. In our general fund cash balance, we started the fiscal year with 18 million, so far in revenues, we received 27 million, we expended 16 million, so we're 11 million over revenues over expenditures, and we're sitting, and we have an ending cash balance of 29 million with encumbrances about 4.6, so an unencumbered cash balance of 24.8 million, and as you can see, over the past two years, it's, we're higher from September of this year than the prior two years. And our student fee balance, schools had from September 19 through October 7 to distribute the fee balances, with December 27, 22nd being the cutoff date from when past accounts will be deactivated if their, their fees are not paid. Right now, we have an outstanding fee balance of 421,000, of which 351,000 is for the current year, and 70,000 is for the prior year, of the prior year, that, that represents about 411 students. Of the 70,000, 56 students are on a payment plan with a balance of 18,000. So 70,000, 18,000 of that 70,000, kids are on a payment plan, making monthly payments to bring that balance down.
That's a great reduction. Are we doing anything about the 350 kids or so that are still owing money from pre, previous year?
Um, we, in order to get where we're at now, a lot of the, with the fall sports that came in play, we got a lot of payments there, kids on a payment plan, homecoming, homecoming tickets were withheld for those that had outstanding fees, so a lot of kids that wanted to purchase a home tuck, homecoming ticket, we saw a big increase in payment plans. Before homecoming, our payment plan number was about 15, 16, the week of homecoming, it spiked up to this 56 students. So we're trying by limiting the number of extracurricular, or preventing them from participating in extracurriculars if they have an outstanding fee balance. Right now, that's the only thing we have until they get to graduation, so we're, we're making progress in that area, so that's.
Okay, but what I'm getting at, George, is you've made great progress, and I salute you and Cameron for writing that, that policy up, however.
Yeah.
Those 340-some, whatever, 411 minus 56.
Right.
I think we should be done on them.
Yeah.
I, I think you should be sending a letter home to the parents, and whatever, and if we need to, we can turn it over to a collection agency.
Okay.
Like, let's not sit there and wait till graduation.
Right. We'll explore other options.
Okay.
And that concludes the report, any questions?
Nice job.
Thanks. All right, go back down for other items. All right, so item D, new funds and student activity programs, purpose goals and proposed budgets. At the high school, we have three new proposed student activity. budgets. At the high school, we have three new, um, proposed student activity accounts. First is a STEM club, a Fund Two Hundred, a student managed student activity, which will introduce student, which will introduce and get students interested in STEM concepts and fields by conducting hands-on activities. Students will gain experience using tools and equipment common in STEM fields. And the advisors for this group are, um, teachers, Mr. Harberty and Mr. Hogan. The next student activity, student managed group proposal is this Junior States of America. This student managed student activity is to start a chapter of Junior States of America at Strongsville High School. Student interest, students interested in politics and government, foreign affairs, the law and education would develop civic values and leadership skills. They become involved in the community, state, national, international community. The advisor for this group will be Mrs. Papish. And the third one is the Stampede, which is a district managed student activity. And that is part of the sports management class at Strongsville High School. Where the Stampede will provide skills of media, marketing, communication skills, collaboration, and customer focus on students. One of the goals is to bring more of the student body to sporting events and activities. And the advisor for the group is Coach Parsons.
Is the Junior States, uh, high school?
What's that?
Club?
Yeah, high school club. These are all high school clubs.
Okay.
And then item E, new funds. Um, these are two funds that I wanna create. One is in the permanent improvement, is creating a separate cost center to account for the proceeds from the Drake cell elementary. It's just to keep those funds separate from the other PI money that's coming in. And then the second one is creating a Fund Twenty-three, a general liability self-insurance fund. And that is to account for the one-to-one device optional insurance fee that we have for our Chromebooks. So to account for that in a self-insurance fund rather than general fund. And then item F is to update our appropriation measure based on the, the new accounts. Uh, the first two changes are in Fund Two Hundred for the STEM club and the Junior States of America. And then the Fund Three Hundred to increase based on the two thousand two fifty. And in Fund Twenty-three to increase by six thousand for the self-insurance fund. And the proceeds for the cell Drake not appropriate at this time until we have a plan on to spend those dollars. And that concludes the report. If there's any questions.
Nope.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Nace. So under timely information, we, I have one item for you. So last month, we, uh, unveiled our brand-new athletic logo. And we are in the process of getting that officially trademarked. So as a part of that trademark application and also, uh, developing licensing agreements with, uh, different companies or businesses that wanna sell our logo, is we have to have the designer officially give us all copyright, uh, rights to that logo. So that's what this is. It's simply the contract between us and, and Charles Conkle, the designer, giving all copyright rights to the school district. So be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the board enters into a copyright assignment agreement with Charles Conkle from Low-Rent High-Rise Design to acquire the entire right to the Strongsville Mustang Athletic logo as stated in the exhibit, which is F.
Do you have a motion?
Tell them.
Thank you. Do, do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jane. Uh, any discussion?
Who did the negotiation?
A dollar seems like a whole lot of money.
That's the next one.
Uh, take role.
Kurt Owens?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Nace?
Yes.
Mr. Rosen?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Now we get into the tough negotiations for, for a whole dollar. So for that, Mark Donley, business manager, is gonna come share his items, uh, for this month. Mark?
Good evening. Uh, thank you. Uh, tonight under Business Services, we have three items for your consideration. The first one is declaring the Albion property, um, not needed for school purposes any longer, which would allow us to lease the property in the second item on the, the agenda. So the first resolution reads, um, "Resolution authorizing lease of grounds at the former Albion Middle School. Resolution declaring that the grounds of the former Albion Middle School are not currently needed for any school purposes and authorizing the lease of real property."
Tell them.
Do you have a motion? Thank you, Duke.
Second.
A second? Thank you, George. Um, so discussion, this, the property at Albion will be, once the building's, uh, removed, um, will be turned into lacrosse fields, correct? That's...
So what we're gonna, yeah, that's correct, Mr. Nace. So the, the property as it is right now will stay the same except for the drive behind what is Albion Middle School. That will be green space. So the next thing the board will vote on is a lease agreement with Strongsville Lacrosse to use, um, the athletic field, what was the football field and track. Um, however, I wanna be clear that the district retains all rights to the property. Uh, we feel that this property is a great asset to the school district. However, um, Strongsville Lacrosse doesn't have a home and we have a field that we really don't have an immediate use for. Uh, so the agreement, if you read through it, basically says, Strongsville Lacrosse, you can use the field until the school district decides it needs it again. And when we need it again, um, you will have to find another home. Uh, so they are excited about the opportunity, but this is the first step to, uh, allow us to enter into that agreement with Strongsville Lacrosse. So, um, that's what this, uh, recommendation's about.
I have a few questions. I'll wait to that part of it.
Okay.
I have a question. Does this preclude any other community members from using the field? Say they wanna have a family football game on that field on, on some weekend?
No, it's still, uh, district property. Um, it's still, uh, there would be something that, you know, we have a facilities and school premises rental procedure. Uh, so if they follow that, it's still a property that we have. Um, but ultimately, Strongsville Lacrosse would have first right of that field. Uh, and we would have to work through, uh, that as well.
Okay, so the common community can't just go and walk their dog around the field? Or, I mean, I don't understand is, how closed off is it gonna be for lacrosse purposes?
It's gonna be the same as it is now.
Okay.
So, you know, uh, if people go in there now and there's access to it, it would be the same, um, setup as it is now.
And this is, this is a similar lease that we have with the city for the Allen property. We leased that for, uh, Rec Center and that one's also a dollar.
Agreed. But the thing is, is it reduces our costs because we're not maintaining the property now. Lacrosse is. And they can't make any modifications, ma- ma- massive or major modifications to the property without our intent, with our, without our approval. But what it does is it helps us reduce costs. We don't have to cut the grass anymore. They maintain it and they have a home.
I'm sorry, Mr. Rosen, we do have to cut the grass.
We have to cut the grass?
Well, the grass is all, the only part that this lease agreement is for is actually the, the football field area. Um, so we have to cut the grass for the whole property anyway. So the only, they have to take care of all of, what the lease agreement says is we will cut the grass, but that's it. Lining, maintenance, repair, replacement, all of that is, uh, um, all of that is their responsibility. Uh, but the, we're already there cutting ninety percent of the grass anyway. Uh, we talked to Mark and our, our, uh, grounds or our maintenance department. Um, and it's not significant for us to run the mowers over that little piece as well.
The kinda mower we use takes maybe forty minutes to do the whole football field. If they're already there, it's, it's a good use of our time and, and it's a good...
Well, it'd be nice just to have, it, it won't be vacant, right? It just won't be property that's sitting there. So we'll have a use on it. People will be on it all, all the time, keeping an eye on it. It'll be active. People will know that it's active. And it'll be, it'll just be significantly better.
Also, with our staff going out there once a week to, to mow, we do get to keep an eye on it. We see trash or something's going on. We know about it. We can take care of that kinda stuff or at least work with Lacrosse to make sure it's not, it's not an abandoned property. It, it still continues to get used by the board and for the community.
My, my, my only comment to that, though, is this, is Prandy Park and all the soccer fields and folds is maintained and cut by Strongsville Soccer. It's all city land. But they have to maintain it because they're provided a million dollars' worth of property and they have to cut it. It was my understanding that when we did this with Lacrosse is they would take that burden of expense off of us. Because we're providing them dirt that they can't get themselves. So that was my understanding. I guess that was incorrect.
Do you have a vote? Kurt Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Rosen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Nace?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, and that, that motion was simply declaring the property not needed for school use. Most of the discussion we had really is applying to the second resolution.
Right.
The lease of the agreement to Strongsville, uh, Lacrosse Association. Um, the board hereby leases to Strongsville Lacrosse Association and the Strongsville Lacrosse Association hereby leases from the board the property formerly known as Albion Middle School Athletic Fields located at one, 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 zero, nine Webster Road, Strongsville, Ohio. The lease is for the term and rental amount set forth in, in the exhibit and is subject to the provisions contained in the lease. The lease does not include the unoccupied school building or the location of the formal, former building once razed, but includes only the exterior grounds including the athletic fields, otherwise known as the premises.
Do you have a motion?
Tell them.
Thank you, Duke. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Jane. Um, any further discussion? Um, the only thing I wanna say is that Lacrosse, the Lacrosse boosters and the Lacrosse group that's, that's signing, that's doing this has been a good friend of the district. They, they're the ones who helped us get the Lacrosse team, uh, a high school sport by funding a, a, a lot of that cost for us. Um, and they continue to be good, good part, great partners with the school district. Um, not only our Lacrosse team has been very successful because of this feeder program that they have that, that provides it. So, um, I'm thrilled that they're gonna take that property and, and make great use out of it. George?
Kurt Owens?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Nace?
Yes.
Mr. Rosen?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And the final item tonight under Bill, Business Services is several gifts that we've received. Um, the Jazzercise of Brunswick slash Strongsville donated miscellaneous work, excuse me, back-to-school supplies for Whitney Elementary students. Tom Marcela of Tabella Furniture donated a custom-made buddy bench for use by students in Kinsner Elementary School. Strongsville Home Depot donated supplies and construction of twenty archery quivers for use by students at Strongsville Middle School. Paketan's Craft Centers donated five-hundred-dollar gift card for mat mounting, framing and display sleeves for forty-seven pieces of student artwork to be displayed at the Strongsville Schools administrative offices. The framing exceeded the initial donation and Paketan's donated the remainder of the cost as well. And I lost those questions. That's the end of Business Services report for tonight.
You know, I'd love to get an, an update on our archery program at the middle school because we continue, we continue to get donations.
We asked Mr. Martinelli to be here tonight for that exact reason. Jeff, will you come up, please?
Oh.
It's a coincidence.
I mean, it's, I, I, every, it is amazing, the money that we, that has been donated for archery.
I asked him and he said, "Seriously, do I really need to come?" And I said, "Yes", because we've been so impressed with the amount of work that he's done. We have to have the best archery program in the state.
Huge.
Jeff, if you have a microphone, talk to us a little bit about, you know, we've seen all the donations coming in, the grants.
That's so funny.
And we never knew there was that amount of money in archery to be had. Talk to us a little bit about what's going on in middle school archery.
Well, as I told you, I don't need any recognition for this. And to be honest with you, I would, I don't have a speech prepared or anything, but, um, I do wanna tell you, I, I thank Mr. Reiba, Mrs. Pelco, Aaron Green, Mr. Dietrich, uh, Mrs. Izo and, um, Mr. Vukovich. Without you guys giving teachers like us the opportunity to, um, to go out and, and get this, uh, I think, you know, when I, when I found out about it, I contacted, um, you know, Steve, our principal, Mr. Dietrich, and I said, "Hey, there's this opportunity. Um, what it entails is me and another teacher going to, um, to get certified. And once we get certified, we each can get twenty-five hundred dollars." Um, free money for brand-new archery equipment. And when I first started at the district, um, I saw that we had archery equipment and I took a look at it and I said, "I, I don't want my kids using this. Um, it's not safe, it's old, and, uh, it's potentially dangerous." Uh, I think it's a great opportunity. I took it upon myself to, to, to go and take a couple of classes. And, um, I knew what, what the program would be for, for the kids that weren't very athletic. And I thought it'd be a great opportunity for those kids to, to learn something different and be successful at something that they might not otherwise be successful at, uh, with your regular sports. So, um, Mr. Demerly, uh, who's another teacher at our school, him and I went and got certified. And we, we, we both got the, the twenty-five hundred dollar grant. Um, and then I, I just called, um, a few other organizations and I explained to them what we're doing. And I was fortunate enough to get, um, a couple hun- a couple more thousand dollars, um, worth of donations. Um, right now, we've, basically, we've set everything up and we're looking to do it, um, second quarter, third quarter. Um, and, uh, just making sure that we have the, the proper space, uh, cause we don't obviously wanna damage anything in the new school. So that's our, our big concern right now.
Please don't.
So, um, so logistically, we're just, that's the thing that we're, we're focused on right now. But, but we have set up, we started to set them up and, um, uh, and, and change the weights, um, get them out of their boxes. And, uh, there's, there's, there's a lot of, uh, equipment that we've gotten. Um, so we've, we've, like I said, we've been setting that up. But without, without having the administration that we have, um, to let us leave, Aaron, I know you, you, you let us leave. I mean, that, that's, you, you gotta pay a sub for a day. However, paying a sub for a day and getting what we've gotten out of it, to me is, that's, we've gotten more than, than I think that we, we would originally thought. So, um, I, I don't wanna take any of the, the, um, uh, I don't wanna take any...
We're giving you the credit.
Yeah, any, any credit. I, I, I just, I appreciate working for a school district that, that allows us to, to think outside the box and let us do stuff. So I don't need any credit, but thank you. So that's kinda what's going on. And I spoke too long, so...
Take a bow. I mean a bow.
Could you do one more thing for us? When, when it gets started and you get it going, could you send an invite to the board? We'd love to come...
Absolutely.
Come and watch and see what's going on.
I want to see an archery exhibition.
Absolutely, yeah. And, you know, hopefully, you know, in the, in the future, we can even get kids to go to the state tournament down in Columbus. So, um, I'm looking forward to it. But absolutely, we'll do that.
Olympic trials are down in Oxford usually. Look for that.
Okay. Thank you.
And George looks very good with an apple on his head. Just put it out there, you know?
Thank you. All invited here? That's awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, I will say, I'll embarrass Jeff a little more, uh, because I can and I have the microphone.
Excellent.
Uh, but, you know, I think it was for, Jeff, how long have you been in the district? Is this your fourth or fifth?
Fourth.
Fourth year. You know, Jenny interviewed and, you know, at, at that time, I was the assistant superintendent and we got the final round of candidates. And, um, Jeff was the finalist that Jenny, uh, recommended to us. And, you know, we have a lot of great teachers, but once in a while you have that interview where you know you've got something special. And I remember leaving and talking to Jenny and said, "He's gonna be something special from our, for our district and for our kids." And, uh, he truly has. And, and Jeff, we appreciate everything you've done. Um, it's been great. So thank you. Ian, I would've said the same thing, but I didn't interview you, you know? Uh, we don't have any updates from curriculum, uh, tonight, uh, but we do have one update from Student Services. So Andy, uh, if you can come up and give your item for this month.
Good evening, members of the board. One item this evening is a tuition excess cost agreement with Crestwood Local Schools, uh, for admission of a student with disabilities for the school year, the sixteen-seventeen school year. Any questions or comments about that or anything else on your mind related to special education?
Your, uh, get well plan from the last, uh, audit that we had, is that going along well?
Yeah, actually, that was in, um, my weekly update last week, that it was approved by the state on the first submission. So now the real work hits where we have to actually do it. But that was a good thing. Yeah. Thanks for asking.
Good.
Excellent.
That's good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Uh, next, Jenny Pelco, Assistant Superintendent with our Human Resource Report.
Thank you, Mr. Reiba. Good evening, everybody. Under, uh, E one, under Human Resources, I have the following, um, recommendations for your consideration. We have one resignation of, um, a certified supplemental of Eric Castle. We have several non-certificated resignations. Under E two, we have the retirement of Elizabeth Reese, teacher, family consumer science teacher, uh, at Strongsville Middle School. And we will recognize her in May. Under E three, we have the appointment of a certificated long-term substitute for Mrs. Reese. It's very fortunate. We found, uh, family consumer science teachers that are not easy to come by. So, continued under E three, we have several appointments of non-certificated staff. We have appointments for certificated substitutes. We also have appointments for non-certificated substitutes. One appointment of a tutor. And finally, uh, non-certificated supplemental contracts for our coaches. Under E four, we have several changes in hours under non-certificated, um, staff... Under E4, we have several changes in hours under non-certificated, um, staff. Under E5, changes in status for non-certificated food services. And continued under E5, non-certificated changes in status, um, many recalls from our reduction in force. Under E6, salary upgrades for three certificated staff members. We have one salary upgrade for non-certificated staff. Under E7, stipends for auditorium light and sound crew. Under E8, continuing contract recommendation, non-certificated staff member. Under E9, we have two injury leaves for non-certificated staff. Under E10, we have certificated, um, medical leaves. Under E11, non-certificated medical leaves. I do need to make one change there. Charles Whitaker, under E11, should be listed under certificated medical leaves. Continued under E11, unpaid medical leaves for non-certificated staff. Under E12, we have memo of understanding for E S Y posting. Under E13, coaches and volunteers, or volunteer coaches. And finally, under E13, we have volunteer chaperones. And that concludes my report unless you have any questions.
I do have a question.
Sure.
Only because wrestling's near and dear to my heart, uh, like numbers. It's two things I like, you know? But, um, I remember earlier, we approved the wrestling coaches for the middle school program and, um.
We had.
So, why, why do we have them on the, I, I remember Guy Stevens was on here before. And I remember, I don't remember Porter, although I know he's been running that program for a while. And then we had Mr. Kletzer, who was gonna be part of the program. And I don't ever remember approving Castle, but I guess he's out now. But, so, what's this, why is it on the list again?
Well, Eric Castle resigned.
Yep.
So, he, before he even started.
Okay.
And so, um, they had that opening. So, that is where Ray Porter is the replacement for Eric Castle there. Adam Kletzer is still one of the coaches, along with, um, Mark Hurdle.
Okay.
So, the three of them are still the coaches. We have one, um, full-time wrestling coach position highs, at the high school still left. So, Guy Stevens is filling that and we're still looking for a point-five, um, wrestling coach for the high school.
All right, thank you.
And there's no technology, uh, report for tonight. So, with that, that ends the superintendent's report.
All right. That brings us to the, uh, Polaris Career Center. Richard?
Thank you, Carl. Uh, just two quick announcements. One, uh, October twenty-seventh, which is a Thursday, from six to eight P M. If you're not going to Tom and Cheese, you can go to the Polaris Open House. Uh, the entire facility will be open. You can explore the facility, meet the instructors, uh, tour the programs, uh, the program labs, the interactive exhibits. There are door prizes. And if you do, if you are a student and you attend the open house and decide to sign up for Polaris, you do get a special gift. So, that is your, uh, incentive to come to the open house. But it is a good, a good time where all the instructors will be there. So, if you are interested, it's a great, a great way to, uh, become familiar with Polaris. And you can go to the website, Polaris E D U, uh, for more information. Although Halloween is the, uh, next holiday around the corner, there's another holiday to start thinking about in November. And, uh, Polaris is getting ready with their seventeenth annual chef training pie sale. They do make some delicious pies. And if you need, whether you want it for Thanksgiving or not, you should buy your, the pies at the, uh, annual pie sale. The orders, they're starting to take the orders now. And then you'll be able to pick them up at the, uh, at the bakery at Polaris on November twenty-second, from ten A M. to four P M. And if you'd like an order form for that, you can go to Polaris dot E D U slash events. And from there, you'll see the, uh, entry for the, uh, annual pie, pie and bake sale. And that concludes my Polaris report.
Legislation?
I am happy to report that everyone is on recess, trying to, um, get re-elected or working on the election. So, I have a very short report. Um, I guess I'll be the first to congratulate, uh, Senator Patton on becoming House of Representatives. Patton, because he is running unopposed, so I'm pretty darn sure he's going to win. I leave the, uh, the rest of the election, uh, to each voter's discretion. I will, uh, highlight that there are a hundred fifty-one school levy or bond issues throughout the state of Ohio. Uh, Strongsville has one, uh, as we all know, and along with Polaris having one. So, I will encourage and remind everyone to vote either by absentee ballot or at the polls on November eighth. It's very important. And that concludes my report.
All right. Um, that brings us to Board Liaison Reports. Um, Jane, City Council?
Okay, City Council. The, um, Communications and Technology Director just recently took over, um, David Sims, it's his name. And he's in the process of updating the city website, so, um, hopefully make it a more user-friendly. So, that'll be exciting. He'll be rolling that out later this fall. And, um, they also made an announcement that Brent Painter, the Economic Development Director for the city, is in high demand for speaking engagements. He went out to California. He was down in Virginia. So, um, that's really a testament to the city of Strongsville and, um, the reputation of Brent Painter. So, that, I'd like to congratulate him on representing our city well. And then lastly, um, trick or treat is scheduled for Monday, Halloween, um, from six to eight. So, just please be mindful of all the youngsters that are out after dark and trick-or-treating. That's our City Council report.
All right. You want to do P T A?
Okay, P T A. P T A Council is gonna be awarding six thousand dollars in grants. I'm not sure if a grant, archery grant is in the mix for that, but, um, the deadline to apply is October thirty-first. And the money is available for teachers and staff of, um, that are, um, in the district and are current members of their P T A unit. All grants must be approved by your P T A unit and the building principal. So, for more information, you can contact Vicki Maloney, Tracy Joniak, or your building principal. So, um, that's money that they earn from their Rockin' at the Rec dances. And then, um, every P T A unit and council P T A passed resolutions supporting issue one-twenty, the school levy. So, we appreciate that. They, um, all took a stance to support the, the school levy. And then lastly, Kinzner P T A is having a fundraiser at Chipotle, um, the one on Pearl Road, on Monday, October twenty-fifth. So, if you are at Chipotle that evening, just mention P T A for Kinzner and they can get some benefit from that. And that concludes my P T A report.
My student achievement.
Okay.
You're on a roll.
I'm on a roll. Student achievement. Well, I have visual aids this month for student achievement. Graciously, with the help of, uh, Mr. Faust, he went and took photographs. So, hopefully, every parent had the opportunity to meet with their child's teacher during your school open houses, um, or on your recent conference days. And these events not only tell you more about your school, but about the curriculum that's being covered. So, this month's student achievement focuses on the fifth grade language arts classes taught at Surar by Melissa Friedman. Mrs. Friedman has developed several innovative lessons to introduce the language arts curriculum. For example, this is a standard that reads, "Compare contrast stories in the same genre on their approaches to similar themes and topics." Okay, that sounds like, how do we teach this? And a genre, first of all, you have to learn what the word genre means. So, when you're in fifth grade, you have to know what genre is. So, the genres can be mystery, adventure, fantasy. So, to accomplish this, Mrs. Friedman groups her students and they create spiders. They pick a theme or a genre and they're assigned. And then they have to research and figure out what makes that genre. For instance, mystery. Is it something that has a spy glass? Is it something that's looking for clues? Or the biography genre, they'll pick a person like Abraham Lincoln and have a, um, a spider that decorates like Abraham Lincoln. So, this teaches the concept by doing the research. But also, they then hang them up all around the room and it reinforces the standard. So, every day, they come into the classroom and they'll see their spider and they have that visual reminder. So, um, that's just, um, an example of how she engages her students. And the standards tend then to stick with her students. And that's their class with all their spiders.
That's great.
And that's our student achievement.
Good job, Jane. Thank you very much. That brings us to, uh, Board Committee Reports. Uh, Finance, we did not have a Finance Committee meeting. Policy Committee?
We did not have a Policy Committee meeting.
Wow. Facilities Committee met last night. George?
We did. Um, review, review of construction projects happened. Our next meeting is going to be the third Wednesday of November and December due to Thanksgiving and, um, Christmas. And we're going to be moving to the second or fourth, fourth Thursday. Remember, Facilities Development Committee meetings, it's a board meeting. It is a public meeting. So, anybody can come and, um, visit if they like. And we're starting to develop a twelve-month calendar and some reoccurring events and activities such as, um, introduction of the P I budgets, uh, review of those budgets, also student, um, increases and decreases within the district. So, we're, we're moving in the right progress, right spot.
All right, thank you. How that brings us to the Consent Calendar. All items with an asterisk get approved in a single vote. We had one correction. Uh, E11, Charles Whitaker moved to certified. Um, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jane. Any discussion? George, take role.
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Nasa?
Yes.
Mr. Rosen?
Yep.
Motion passes.
That brings us to Board of Education Other. Mr. Evans has some other?
Yes, I do.
Colonel Evans has some other. Excuse me.
Yeah. Two things. Uh, number one, I wanted to echo what Cameron talked about, the flag dedication on the twenty-eighth. If you hadn't seen the preview, it's the crown jewel of Strongsville. I think we can be very proud of that. The weather was perfect and we have some really, really good pictures of the flag. Hopefully, on the twenty-eighth, the weather will be nice again. Senior night, of course, so we're gonna honor our seniors that night. And, uh, we get participation from some organizations in the community. Again, would like to thank the donors in the community who made that possible, to have our, our beautiful flag up there. And so, thank you very much for that and look forward to having everybody there. It is the Brunswick game. And, um, while both teams have been in a developmental slash rebuilding phase, we would certainly like to send them back to Brunswick frowning. So, um, please be there. The second thing is, there's some scholarship money. A few parents out there that listen to this on the tube, there's scholarship money out there that's laying on the table. The Voice of Democracy, which is sponsored by the V F W, and Patriots Pen, which is sponsored by the V F W for the middle school. All your, your child has to do is write on the topic that's, and there's, uh, Mr. Vukovich and some of the instructors, the teachers at the middle school have the applications, or Mr. Dietrich does. And at the high school, um, Mr. Brian Tomino has the applications and some of the language arts teachers have the applications. But these scholarships can go anywhere from five hundred dollars up to thirty thousand dollars. And, uh, I know when I paid for my kid's college, it was very, very expensive and something like that would really be helpful. So, you know, if, if you haven't heard from your children, get on them a little bit, ask them if they could put it in. They have to write like a one or two-page essay and then read it onto a video tape, which Vicki would really like to do, video, uh, and then turn it in. And then the awards will start at the local level here in Strongsville. And, um, there's money on the table. So, please, the deadline is November first. It's been out there for a while. We really would like to see some applications this year. Uh, so please get it in. That's it.
Colonel?
You still have videotape or is it archer?
Well, you can do it. You can put it on whatever media is appropriate. I am the old man in the sea here.
I still say videotape, Colonel.
Put it on video.
And they all laugh at me, too. That's okay.
Yes, we do. Um, any other others?
I have another other. Um, I just want to remind everyone in the community that the public library is a great resource. They have, um, this booklet that's out. It's free and it lists all of the programs that are available throughout the entire Cuyahoga County system. So, like, I just went to an author visit and listened to an author and it was fascinating. They had R. L. Stein go to the Snow Road branch, um, last week and several students got to go and listen to him speak and have him autograph their book. And, um, so I just want to, um, remind you that, and there's story times that are free for the youngsters. So, they also have free tutoring available in the, um, library after school. So, if you, um, want to take advantage of that, you can go there. And they just got a grant, this ties in well with you, Colonel Evans, that they are putting in a recording studio in our library. So, anyone can go and you can then record yourself reading your essay that you, uh, submit to the V F W.
And put it on videotape, right?
I'm not sure if they, I think it's probably a flash drive.
Okay.
I just wanted to.
I think it's a Betamax.
Yeah. To remind, uh, people to take advantage of our library system because we are, um, always being voted the best library in the country. So, check it out.
All right. Um, I just want to mention, I was at the, the freshman football game tonight and your flag was flying beautifully. And it is, it does make a huge difference when you see that. Uh, so, nice work on that. It looked really good tonight. That's it, I think, for the others. Um, meeting notification, we have a, uh, regular board meeting, um, on November third at seven o'clock. Can we change, we're changing, is that correct?
Well, it's still gonna be the same date. It's gonna start at six-thirty, um, with the State of the Schools presentation. And it's gonna be at the middle school.
Ah, so it'll be at six-thirty on November third at the middle school. And we're gonna do our State of the School presentation.
And then we'll, yeah.
Then we'll go right into, right into the board meeting. All right.
And another one on the seventeenth.
And another one on the seventeenth, November seventeenth. Okay, I think we do have need for executive session on one item.
One item, uh, to consider the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee or official.
All right, do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, George. Uh, take role.
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Rosen?
Yep.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Nasa?
Yes.
Insert an executive session at eight fifteen?
Eight fifteen. I believe we have any public business afterwards.